Thank you everyone. Chair would like to call to order the regular monthly meeting with the board trustees of the village of Lake Barrington. It is Tuesday, March 3, 2020. It is 7:04. Again, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
President Richardson.
Here.
Trustee Burke. Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Perkins.
Here.
Trustee Rigby.
Here.
Trustee Schaller.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
Thank you. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Agenda items for this evening is approval of minutes. We have three different sets of minutes before you. Minutes of the special committee of the whole of this board along with our planned commission that was held on February 1st. There are some links in your handouts or in your digital agenda that you can reference. Minutes of the special committee of the whole from our meeting on February 4th and minutes of our full board trustees meeting also from the same committee report. Are there questions or edits or comments for the clerk on the minutes? Then Chair would like a motion to approve and block agenda items for A, B, and C as noted above. May I have that motion? Trusted Schaller seconded by Trustee Thompson. Thank you both gentlemen. Clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Schaller.
Yes.
Trustee Thompson.
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell.
Yes.
Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Rigby.
I.
President Richardson.
Yes, thank you. And Chair will ask that the record be numbered for five lists of states for any necessary technical conforming amendments without objection to the order. Agenda item five, President's remarks. We have three things on the agenda tonight. Four things. Five things actually. Pretty busy tonight. I want to, I'd like to say that, and I want to be respectful because we have some guests and I'm going to kind of do it on the basis of who I think has to drive the farthest home. So I'm going to ask our friends from Bernardi, our investment advisors, to come up and review first on that. And the treasurer is welcome to join if that's permanent.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then looking person at home with Good Shepherd and then an introduction to a dear friend of ours here, Dr. Kircher.
I think he comes from Chicago, so I'm sure he very appreciative of that. So I will introduce Matt Bernardi, he's here from Bernardi Securities. I'll give a pretty quick, brief overview. I did give you my report, which is one, two, three, four, five pages and six pages of numbers, believe it. I didn't mean to overwhelm you, but if you have any question about the numbers, it should be covered in here. I'll just mention, we're going to talk mostly tonight about the bond funds. We give a fair amount of money in Barrington Bank and they're paying competitive interest rates on our money markets. So this, at the end of 2000, September 31st, 2019, the general fund had $848,000 in their bond fund and Water Sewer had about $910,000 in their bond fund. General Fund earned $21,000 in interest and the Water Sewer Fund earned $22,500 in interest. And I will just reiterate the terms of our investment policy. The first one, it sounds obvious, but you know, it is listed as one of our criteria and that's legality of the investment. Safety principle is probably the really number one thing we hope to, second thing other than legality. Liquidity, to help meet our liquidity needs. And then the last, we actually look at is return on the investment. So those four criteria have been met by all our investments in the bond fund. I just wanted to know that, you know, when you're looking for, you know, a safer investment, sometimes returns can measure, you know, is always measured with risk. So if you have a really safe return, the safe investment, the risk might not be, or the return, excuse me, might not be quite as high as something you take a little more risk on, but we certainly will not take any risk with our taxpayers' dollars. The bonds are all highly rated. You know, we have a three-year sort of ladder that's been put in place, the board asked to put in place that years ago. So the average duration is about 1.15 years for the Water Sewer bonds and 1.136 years for the general fund. Every year, about 30 of the bonds are rolling over, which means we're tying into new interest rates. The fund did well this year. Bonds did well in the market. We tied in some, you know, early interest rates, higher interest rates. And now into the year that rates are coming down, you know, our bond portfolio, our value has gone up because the rates are coming down. So we really had the best of all scenarios. As a, as a rule, we don't really mark our investments to market and that's particularly because we're buying and we're holding. We have no intent on selling, but really also they're all short in duration. So the fluctuation, you know, is pretty little, you know, as it gets closer to the bond maturity date, there's no gain or loss of the bond. So we haven't marked those. When we ever have substantial swings, we'll talk to the auditors and maybe start marking those, but I don't see any intent to do that. And then one thing that Matt's going to touch on, which I want to touch on with the board a little bit. On August 23rd, 2019, Governor Pritzker signed the Sustainable Investment Act into law. So effective 1/1/2020, the act was an initiative of the Illinois State Treasurer, Michael Ferricks. And it strongly encourages government units to develop a sustainable investment policy. Does not mandate this, which is very important, you know, it's not one of those own funded mandates that the state has passed on, you know, in the past, but it's strongly suggesting. And so if the village were to choose to incorporate this into investment policy, it's one more of those terms we look at of those, you know, four I mentioned, this would be the fifth. And Matt can actually cover some of that with you. We actually have two bonds in our portfolio that I even didn't realize that were sort of in the sustainable investment category. And those criteria would be, you know, as listed in an article by the IML magazine, corporate governments and leadership factors, environmental factors, social capital factors, human capital factors, and/or business model innovation factors. So those are all that they're looking at in this new Sustainable Investment Act. So without further ado, I won't keep you initiative, a question on the numbers before Matt comes up on my report. He's the expert, so I will imagine he can answer most any questions you have.
Thank you. Thank you for moving me up too. I'll try to look at it because of that. Currently sleep training our baby, so. She can't hardly hear her cries.
Oh, Dr. Fur.
Do you realize who this Mark Street?
How old, Matt?
Four months.
Oh.
Well, you're on vacation.
It's a daughter test.
And she's sleeping for you every night?
She did last night, but she cried for 25.
You know.
That's the worst experience I've had.
You'll find this out as you get, that they used to psychologically break enemy prisoners of war through sleep deprivation.
Okay.
There was a cartoon given to my wife and me when our first was born with two bleary-eyed parents standing in front of a bassinet that said, terrorist with two hostages. That's sometimes how it feels. You sure you don't want to go last mistake?
Yeah.
In the conference room.
It's a long. But thank you. So the presentation I put together was done, we can have two weeks ago. So really what's happened in the markets, there's nothing there that does it justice. So, but you know, these times are, they're really unique. They're very scary for health reasons and also normal conditions, but the portfolio has performed well in this environment over the last year. It is very well positioned from, as Peggy touched on, liquidity and safety of principle perspective and is also out, out return of benchmark too, which is, which is great. I listened to the agenda on slide two. You know, before I get into, you know, we can start off with some good news. I do want to congratulate you on the upgrade from Moody's to AA1. I think that is, that's very honorable, that credit rating designation, and I really think it exemplifies the solid stewardship that this board leaves the community. It's a great honor, that upgrade that we're given.
Sounds like we have a plan.
Yeah. So congratulations. Market update, you know, as I noted, it's stale here, but it starts on slide seven. These are interest rates for securities that we'll consider for the portfolio, not including U.S. agencies. So since I piled the slide two weeks ago, the five-year treasury has moved from 1.41% to in basis points. I wrote 80 basis points. This was at maybe one o'clock today and since then it's now moved down to 74 basis points. That's .74. These are really big drastic moves. The world is very scared about the impact of this virus on the economy and then therefore the Fed's reaction. The one-year treasury has moved from 1.48 to 76 basis points. Taxable munis, which are higher yielding than treasuries, the five-years move from 174 to 129 and the one-years move from 169 to 122. So basically yields a lot lower, but taxable munis still offer more value, more yield compared to treasuries. So we still see a lot of value there. Compared to CDs though, CDs offer actually a little bit more yield than taxable municipals on average and you'll see how that's reflected in the portfolio in a couple of number of slides later. Obviously the culprit here is the coronavirus, both the human and health impact it's going to make on the economy, but the fact of the matter is that the Fed, monetary policy authorities across the globe and even fiscal authorities in a lot of ways, don't have any firepower. There's no parachute they're really taking the pole right now. The Fed took emergency measures today by cutting interest rates really significantly and it definitely took the market off guard. That type of situation historically, stocks were rallied significantly. They did at first, but then they sold off significantly and bonds probably would have sold off a longer, meaning higher yields, but the complete opposite happened. People are worried, people are scared. Today it's moved by the Fed, I think only spooked the market. And then that's compounded with the fact that we're already in such low interest rates, there's really nothing more for them that they can do to make a big impact. So it's, like I said, scary, very, very unique times. But good news, slide eight, municipal bonds, which are, or from 60, 70 to 70% of these portfolios, remain high grade historically. I've charted the default rates, they're still very low for double A municipal bonds. The 10-year rolling default rate over the last 50 years is .02%. It rounds to zero. For triple A, it's 0%. There were no defaults in 2018, this is the last period of available data. Upgrades, uppaced downgrades. And Moody's, who just gave you that great rating, noted that the sector remains notable for infrequent defaults and extraordinary stability. So the portfolio by being invested in this pool is very solid from a credit perspective. That's just looking historically. If you look in perspective, we're on slide nine, and if you want to go blind at the same time, this is graphing all the rainy day fund balances. This is how, this demonstrates how well prepared the average municipality is. The average rainy day fund balance at the state level is higher than what's in 2000 before the recession and 2007 before the great financial crisis. The average is on average higher and also the median municipality has a higher rate of rainy day fund balance. So that demonstrates there's broad health within the sector. Moving on to slide 10, debt. Debt is the big worry with the Fed. It's one of the big reasons they're so dovish. They're very worried about the stock of debt in the system. If we go into deflationary environment, the stock of debt becomes an even bigger burden. That's why you've seen such a big balance sheets grow so much on the next slide, slide 11. You know, fact of the matter is, under a deflationary scenario, the dollar that you have today is worth more tomorrow. That debt that we have today, therefore is a bigger burden tomorrow under deflation. And so the Fed is very worried about spiraling down, opposite to what we went through in the 70s and 80s with inflation until going to deflationary situation. And that stock of debt that is already really significant becomes even more of a burden. We're at about 80% of debt to GDP at the cyber level, the U.S. Treasury level, and the CBO predicts that it's going to move to around 200% of GDP by 2050. So we're running trillion dollar deficits projected over the next 10 years. The Fed is pretty worried about that and that's why they're keeping the rates, one of the reasons they're keeping the rates low. So that kind of gives you a macro overview of what's going on right now. It's uncharted territory. We're not in the business of trying to predict what's going to happen and the portfolio is illustrative of that. I kind of bold pointed some summary items for the portfolio on slide 13. Portfolio outperformed treasury bond benchmark since inception. Therefore you've added a lot of value for your cash and energy balances, both in the fact that you've undergone this strategy using taxable municipals and CDs, but also the fact that you've laddered out for years, you've locked in higher rates rather than keeping it in cash or very short-term CDs. That being said, the portfolio still has a very average short maturity, one and a half years and a ladder structure so you have ongoing liquidity coming to if you do need some sort of capital expenditures. As I noted, municipal yields compare very fairly to treasuries. We still see a lot, a lot of opportunity there, not so much to CDs. Credit is very strong nationwide and even within poorly, poor credit states like Illinois, there's still a lot of opportunity. Slide 14 shows you the performance of the portfolios. You can see how since inception it's outperformed treasury bond benchmark by about, it's 24 basis points, .24%. And that breaks out the returns for the fixed income, which is taxable munis and CDs. And then kind of, as I've alluded to on slide 15, I've provided a slide-by-side of the allocation from a sector perspective. The red bar charts are your taxable municipal exposure and you can see that how from 2019, when I was here last, the same, basically the same week, to the end of January, your municipal exposure has gone lower. And that's because we've seen more, more opportunity, higher yields in CDs and we've been buying this sort of portfolio. Therefore, but that being said, the average credit rating still remains very high, double A plus, and the allocation in CDs is FDIC insured CDs. 16, slide 16 kind of gives you a snapshot of yields, which hasn't really changed a lot, but from a relative perspective, the relationship holds. And then, you know, towards the end, I also provide a slide of the ladder structure. The ladder enables ongoing liquidity and funds coming to you on a natural level if you do have any other capital expenditures. And then also lastly, your geographic allocation, which is diverse among a dozen different states or so. The general fund does have a high allocation from a state perspective to Illinois. I do want to remind you that's not state of Illinois bonds, it's not city of Chicago bonds. Those are bonds like Lake Barrington, very high-grade credits in a bad state that pay high yields simply because they're in Illinois. So we still see a lot of value actually within Illinois and within Illinois on that, on And then towards the end, two kind of addendum slides. If you have any take any questions now about the portfolio before I get to the sustainable investing aspect or, or as we see, as we develop.
Chair, we'd be happy to recognize trustees for the purpose of questions. Thank you. I think you're doing a great job dumbing it down.
All right. Well, in terms of ESG investing, designing an environmentally sustainable investment policy, you know, Bernardi's got really, we're not in the business of giving you guidance necessarily on how to write that or if you should write that. It's not necessarily referred to, but it's my personal opinion that it's best practices. I think that this sustainable investing is kind of the zeitgeist of the generation and in some ways from an investment perspective could be kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy if this trend zeitgeist continues. That being said, I do think that municipal bonds kind of are a natural fit, natural plug for that allocation within your portfolio. They are the original impact investment. They fund 75% of our nation's infrastructure. I think I noted here in 1812, the first bond, municipal bond that was issued funded the canal from New York City. They funded the Golden Gate Bridge. So they, municipal bonds, as you well know, are driving our communities, driving our nation forward. They're a huge impact investment. And to further that, as Peggy noted, even coincidentally, within the portfolio, there was two QCPS, two bonds that you own that are, are green of ESG, Paris Tennessee Improvement Bonds. They were issued as part of the Paris Green Community Program. I don't know if you've ever been to Paris Tennessee, but there's, I think it's a life-size, right? They have a life-size, I don't know if it's called the actual tower, but they issued bonds to retrofit their facilities for energy conservation. They probably put an LED lighting or possibly solar panels on the roof. And then also you own Texas Women's University, which is the largest state-supported university for women in the United States. These aren't labeled green bonds or ESG bonds, they're just municipal bonds. So they fit this slug within, within your investment policy if you were to write in an ESG type of policy. And then lastly, not as important as it was two weeks ago, if there were any portfolio parameter changes I would have recommended two weeks ago, I would have thought about possibly extending the max maturity to five years. It's not a strong recommendation today, makes up for the move we had. We've had, the, the concept of going out four or five more years, which your investment policy allows, is to lock in longer term rates in case of a recessionary scenario where the Fed has to drastically cut rates. Well, that's what happened today. So today, as, you know, as we're standing here in the markets, this is not my recommendation, but should the coronavirus peter off, peter out and the economy come back to full steam, I think it's something the board should consider, move to a four or five-year ladder to be able to lock in some longer, relatively higher yields. So that wraps it up for me. Thank you very much for moving me up and for all your confidence in our team.
Chair will yield to our finance chair, Trustee Rigby, for any questions you might have and you can start us.
It's a good presentation and I appreciate your agility to be able to discuss what happened today. The market dropped from being up 300 points down, just a little down, being up 300 points to going down as far as 800 below the close, what, 580 or something like that this afternoon? I think so, yeah. So anyway, yeah, these are interesting times and what's your advice for if you have a CD that's going to material on the 9th of March?
Is this a personal question or?
It's a hypothetical.
Well, in relation to the board, it's all about asset allocation and sticking within your asset allocation. From our perspective, the Bernardi approaches the ladder. Stick with the ladder because you're never going to tackle markets. You know, we could have 10,000 coronavirus diagnosis in the United States. If that happens, yields are going to go lower. This might be it. We might have 100 and probably not, there's probably more than 100 that are actually out there, but it's a possible time, so don't time, stick with your ladder. We recommend for individual investors, we recommend a 15-year ladder. So you should invest about 15 years.
Well, if George pays good care of me, I'll make it.
So I don't know if that answers your question.
No, that's good. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Trustee Perkins.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I have no questions. Thank you.
Trustee Schaller.
Yeah, obviously well researched and with these times, it's hard to predict anything. So I guess we're as good a position as we could be despite what's going on. We appreciate it.
Trustee Thompson, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, I just, no questions, I just want to say thank you very much and I almost had the same question as Trustee Rigby, but I think I will take it.
Trustee Mitchell.
I think Randy, Trustee Rigby, if you have a dog, I would just let the dog eat it. I mean, about the same outcome. And thank you very much. This is always so informative and so educational because I think we don't realize what it takes beyond our borders to sort of run a village or a town and try to do these things. And I know that without, for example, our open space bond funds and these things, that we were on the other side, I think it's, it's really critical to have a good relationship with someone like Bernardi, who all done a great deal with us and helped us deal with the changes in the market and it's so appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll simply, I'll express my gratitude as well. It's, it's, it's dangerous to speculate too much. So your caution is, well, is very much appreciated because what burden, what would happen if the state's finances really got to a point where nobody would loan to state money? Well, the first thing that would happen is unfunded mandates upon municipalities would flood up this place. And that would change our capital structure dramatically. Have I given that serious thought? No, but have I given a passive thought? And so I appreciate the fact that you guys try to look around the corner. And sometime when you're ready to leave that little, beautiful daughter, you and your wife come out and we'll have a couple of bottles of red wine and we'll speculate about what comes after because what happens when the street stops loaning Illinois money?
Yeah, exactly. It's just like the macro environment is totally uncharted water, is totally uncharted. There's no way, much be said to speculate.
The notion that we will ever pay $23 trillion back is just, you know, the Confederacy I guess tried that and probably will end much the same way.
The last time we ran at this level, projected to run at this level of debt to GDP was after World War II. And inflation though, reared its head. We had 10 to 18 to 20% levels of inflation. We haven't seen that. Will we see that? I, you know.
Pretty tough, it's just a time inventory and with global supply chains, they face other provinces we're seeing. We're probably not going to see inflation here, because I'm not as worried about that as I am about the debt. Just the general, household debt, corporate debt, municipal debt, state and federal debt.
But if we had inflation, it would chip away at that. But like I said, we don't, it's, we don't even have that going for us, so it's, yeah, it's scary.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Safe to drive going home.
Thanks very much.
Congratulations.
Get some sleep, burp the dog.
Okay, I'd like Dr. George Chris to come up. He is a longtime friend of many of us here in Lake Barrington. He took marvelous care of my cat for many years and has also visited with my wife from time to time. And most importantly for our audience here tonight, he is a new business resident in the village of Lake Barrington in Pepper Park. So, Dr., welcome. Everybody knows you, but for the benefit of those who will watch this later, perhaps talk a little bit about your practice and what brought you to Lake Barrington and how things have evolved.
Thank you very much for the invite. Thank you for the hospitality and thank you for all the help at the village, that the fire marshal, that the firemen who were in charge of the response gave us in this whole process of, of getting from just an idea to now what we think is the, probably the most modern, the most beautiful cardiology-specific, you know, dedicated to a single specialty-type office in the, in the neighborhood. And that would include, you know, Barrington South, Barrington, Crystal Lake here, it's all right here in Barrington. We can do stress tests, nuclear types, resting and exercise. We have full capacity echo ultrasound images of cardiac and non-cardiac structures. We do in-office stress testing. There's two doctors, myself and another one, Dr. Timothy Ellicott, who moved to the, our region from Condel Hospital. And we have a nurse practitioner, Anna, Anna Lincheck, who does a great job with the patients that we take care of. So, you know, we're thrilled to be here. It's, it's, in my personal opinion, it's been a long time coming. We've been working in a small office in Fox River Grove, for the most part trying to keep our overhead down and save some money so that we could, you know, jump out. You haven't always gone, he has a four-month, 11, nine-year-old little girl. And so if someone asks me if I'm going to retire, I say, you know, I have a retirement. And she has a very healthy, or I should say unhealthy golf, golf habit. You know, she's ranked among kids her age. So we get invitations to play in New Zealand and we get invitations to play in Australia and Ireland and, you know, I have to say, no, 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 but I can't imagine what all that would cost, so I have to, you know, keep working. But we work very closely with the hospital at Good Shepherd. All our interventional work, catheter work that we decide needs to be done based on admirable stress testing and functional studies that we do, all gets worked up at Good Shepherd. We have a tremendous support group over there. Karen Lambert runs the place and does a fine job, as most of you know. We have a super surgical support group with Dr. Vitapka, who is all our cardiac and vascular work. The radiology crew there is outstanding and, you know, our ICU is our brand-new state-of-the-art cardiac catheters, our brand-new state-of-the-art. And I would venture to say that 95-plus percent of what a patient would need from a cardiac perspective can be taken right here, you know, in our neighborhood. You know, there's some, you know, rare and unusual therapies that, you know, require intensive type work, artificial hearts, transplants, sophisticated type medicines that are specifically best handled at university-type settings, but for the mundane. But for the mundane, for the garden variety stuff that we do, 95% of what, you know, people are going to experience as it relates to cardiac and cardiac muscle function dysfunction, arrhythmias, valves, what have you, can all be handled right here in our backyard. So we're fortunate. We've been very, very blessed. God's been good to all of us. We're all healthy. And that's about all we can ask for. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for support because I know we've submitted permits for approval and tried to dot all the i's and cross all the t's. Hopefully, we did that satisfactorily. And we appreciate the opportunity to be part of the community and look forward to a long relationship in the future. Any questions?
Oh, yeah, we're very grateful. And I'll start on my level. Trustee Mitchell.
Thank you, Dr. Christie, and welcome to Lake Barrington. It's a pleasure here. I am fortunate to have had my cardiac event a long time ago, 1999, and appreciate the value of somebody who is well-trained and up on top of things. And I just, I have a question. It's sort of a burning question. Do you have any connection to Notre Dame? I know, I think you're married. Atlanta, that's in Atlanta. Football family, that, and estrich.
So I live in Atlanta. My next-door neighbor was Robert Woodruff Scrandall. They started a Koch family. And the Notre Dame thing was interesting because, like a lot of kids who applied to medical school and applied to different schools, I didn't get in the first time I applied. As a matter of fact, there were 14 solid rejection letters that I got despite solid grades, double major job, fraternity letters, test scores. It was just one of the most humble experiences. But I was talking to my brother about it today. Things like that that one experiences, I think, makes you want it even more. So when I got to medical school at Loyola, I became president of my school as a junior. I was president of my school as a senior. And I got one of the highest-rated letters from the dean of the medical school. So, you know, it's just one of those things where if you want something bad, and I tell my daughter who's in Kansas right now, she's a sophomore, I said, "If your want-to is big enough, there's really not much that's going to get in your way. You may not get it when you want it, but it's there to keep going. It's going to happen for you. Just keep going."
I think those letters are going to be well-thumbed through by your kids. I just, I asked to clarify that because very seldom, I would say rare, is it?
Yeah, very seldom.
That we have someone come and speak or that we welcome with such aplomb as has been done here that is not a Notre Dame graduate.
Well, my gratitude to Dr. Christie is that he was able to testify much to the consternation of my critics that I do have a heart. There was a similar community debate about that topic some time ago.
Suggest that he put it on the Christmas card.
That's a good idea. I like that. Thank you. Welcome.
Trustee Thompson.
Hey, Mr. President. I also would like to welcome you to the village, Dr., and thank you for moving here because your office is just terrific. And you have a lot of people behind you and a lot of success in this area. And we really thank you for moving from some other community to Lake Barrington. And that's it.
Trustee Shaw.
Likewise, I'm grateful that you have moved closer because we live in the neighborhood and can almost knock on your door. It's almost good to hear likewise about Good Shepherd Hospital because their art department, the ICU and everything else is top-notch and it's nice that all the physicians associated would think that way as well. Because that's very, very important.
Oh, it's a wonderful place. And, you know, I credit, you know, our administration, Karen, who's been leading it for, gosh, 12, 15 years. Her ability to interface with the community and the support that, you know, this community has given that hospital has been nothing short of phenomenal. You just don't see it. And so, you know, we couldn't do what we do if it weren't for, you know, the support from infidelity. But a lot of that is because Karen, you know, marches up and makes asks. And people like her, they believe in what we do, they believe in the institution, they see the good work that comes out there. They bring themselves there, they bring their families there, they bring their kids there. So it's been a wonderful place.
Well, her presence, you're a part of our community. And Loyola Jesuits must have trained you well. And even though the Jesuits don't run Notre Dame, they do do Marquette that I want to work at.
I'll have to monitor that. Trustee Burkins.
Welcome. Welcome to the neighborhood. I haven't had any need for cardiology services, but hopefully, yes, and thankfully, I haven't. But it's nice to know, it's very reassuring to know that some of your extension in the cardiology field is right here, just, you know, across the street. Yeah. That's really great. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Rickby.
Well, thanks for coming. And I enjoyed the visit to your office. I met your family, including Sophia.
Probably, right?
And it's, the diagnostic equipment there that you have is world-class. And it's a much bigger facility than you had before, so I know you're going to be out there. So wish you the best and call on us if you need anything.
I'm sure. Well, thank you very much.
How simply and in the noble, beyond the outstanding individual care your practice provides, it further drives the notion of Lake Barrington as a center of regional excellence in medicine, especially in cardiology and those things that relate to an older population because our demographics are older than our state's population. And, you know, you certainly are to be credited for the vision. But I got to know your team and you've had some wonderful people work for you for a number of years who make it easy. Dealing with any office is sometimes challenging, but your folks always made it easy. And I want to praise them in front of you because you sure brought my aunt over a number of times.
Well, I'll tell them.
Always a hand pedaler, your folks are very gracious.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate that.
Well, we're grateful to you coming in. Please note that the welcome and the village hall is always out before you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We can move to the much-talked-about coronavirus presentation. I want to ask Kathy Orden.
Reedan, that was very close.
She is the Regional Infection Preventionist. And I had reached out to Karen Lambert, who George just mentioned, and suggested this. I was, after you presented, I was on a call that made a mistake. I was with 170 suburban mayors since 1999. And then there was a White House call last night that I was seated in as well. You know, it is really kind of true, and I'm looking forward to your presentation, that everybody's grandmother basically told them how to manage this disease. You wash your hands, you don't pick your nose, you don't spit on your brother. So thank you for being with us. We're delighted and we look forward to your comments.
You're welcome. I'm glad to be here. My name is Kathy Reedan. You did well with that. Thank you very much. And I'm a multi-site director of infection prevention for African-Auora Health for assistance in 28 hospitals. Good Shepherd is one of them, and it's one of the hospitals in my purview. I think we're okay here. And as you might expect, coronavirus has been on our radar for a long time now. Even though it's only been two months, it feels like two years, we've been working on this. So, yes, please go ahead. It's very touchy. Well, thank you for your present. Of course, you know, it's going to continue. But I just wanted to give you a brief presentation.
I'll have you take the slides from people on the camera. Great thing.
Great. Brief presentation and then just open it to questions. So this, there are so many medical professionals and scientists who are working on the coronavirus, understanding of this as a virus, as an infectious disease, infectious disease, and as an event across the world. I've been in infectious diseases and infection prevention for 30-some years, and I've always felt it was extremely important. Well, you had a presentation to people before me that showed that infection prevention and infectious diseases reaches far into far more than just the medical realm as you're seeing the way it affects the world economy and our United States economy and financial markets right now. So this map was developed by Johns Hopkins. It's a heat map and it changes daily as we know more about the virus and where it spread. When I first saw this map a couple of weeks ago, the circles were small, red, and mostly centered over China. The progression has been pretty typical of an infectious disease that has an entirely susceptible population to spread within. And that's what the coronavirus, this particular coronavirus, is. So you can see where it's spread. I'll show you another picture of where it is in the United States. But remember, when we look at the number 92,000 cases, those are laboratory-confirmed cases. There are many, many more people out there who have subclinical, mild or moderate infections who were never tested for the disease and yet have it. So the 92,000 is probably a far lower number than what's actually occurring across the world right now. And when you see any rates that are predicated on that number in the denominator, the numerator is fairly accurate, but the denominator is probably smaller than what it is. So those rates are either smaller or larger depending on what you're looking at than what you see here. We can talk about that a little bit more later. But I wanted to note that 92,000 is not a hard and fast number. It's just what's lab-confirmed. IDPH has been working on this for a long time. They have been following the CDC guidance on this. And at the very beginning, our guidance for persons under investigation were tied to symptomology, fever, cough, sore throat, and it was tied to travel history. At the beginning, it was Wuhan, China. And as the virus has spread across the world and we're recognizing it in different countries across the world, they have upgraded their persons under investigation guidance to include those countries that have ongoing sustained transmission as evidenced by lab testing. In the United States, we just got started with lab testing a few weeks ago. The CDC had developed tests. They made it available through their own lab. And a few weeks ago, they pushed this test out to different states. Have problems with the test. Therefore, it's not something that we can rely on for accurate numbers. But if, but it is something that's under development and will be more readily available to us as the test gets better and better in the United States. So this is something that was pushed out from the state of Illinois on February 28th, and it expanded our person under investigation epidemiologic risk to not only China, but to South Korea, Iran, Italy, and Japan, which is where there's no sustained transmission. These are not the only countries that are going to have known sustained transmission in the coming weeks and months. United States will be one of them. We all believe. But I wanted to recognize that this is developing, that IDPH does change their guidance for us as the world situation develops and as we know more about what's happening with coronavirus across the world. This is the state from the Johns Hopkins heat map. This is just a blow for the United States. You know, the red circles are smaller, but those are the known cases. So we can expect that there are going to be more and more cases discovered in the United States as this virus gains footold over here because we're international world. You know, the virus takes the opportunity to go work in with the humans who are now the hosts for this virus. So this is the current state of COVID-19. And I should say the coronavirus that we used to call the Wuhan virus, Wuhan coronavirus, has now officially given the name COVID-19. That's coronavirus infectious disease. It actually started developing in the late 2019 timeframe. So that's its official title as we speak. That was designated by the World Health Organization about two weeks ago, I think. So that's the US map. Wanted to talk a little bit more about the cases that are known. Again, they're lab-confirmed cases in the United States. We now have greater than 100 cases that are confirmed by lab testing. 22 were travel-related. 27, or I'm sorry, 11 were spread person-to-person. 27 had unknown causes, no travel history, no known exposures to others who were known to have coronavirus infections or COVID-19 infections. And 48 cases in repatriated Americans, for instance, those who were on the Diamond Princess cruise ship. So that's the tip of the iceberg. I'm only giving you confirmed. And I know there's a lot more underneath the surface of the water. In Illinois, as of Monday, there were 102 people being tested for the virus because they met the definitions as a person under investigation. The state health department is watching 250 people more for symptoms based on their travel history. Suspected coronavirus case is now being treated at the University of Chicago Medical Center. We don't know whether it's positive or not, but they had, this was a news story today, so I wanted to bring it to your attention. And we have four cases that were known cases in Illinois. Two pairs of a husband and wife, teamed for each of those, and they're all doing well. They were all evaluated, medically treated and cared for, some in the hospital, some in the home setting, and they recovered. The state has a hotline that people can call if they have questions about coronavirus. And that's the 800 number that's published here. And they do mail it 24/7. I called it this morning because I was able to get through. So I know that it's up and functioning. There's also a number for the Office of Consumer Health Insurance for people who want to find out about their insurance coverage related to any issues they might have with coronavirus. Let me see. Oh, and this was the announcement about the cases in Illinois. And this was updated as of March 2nd. We have received memos from the state of Illinois almost daily with updates about coronavirus. We also receive information from the CDC and the World Health Organization. My mailbox is full every day. It takes me a long time to get through all of this information, but it's all very important. Helps us be prepared in healthcare settings and in our communities.
Yeah. Have you noticed any variance in the analysis you get from different agencies or are they all?
So a lot of them, they're pretty much the same, however, the way they analyze things are different. So one organization says, "We want to tell you about a statistical analysis called RNOT." And RNOT tells us how many cases, how many people who are exposed to a known person with an infectious disease, how many other people that person will expose themselves. So that seems, when you look at the number, you wonder how that compares to a statistic that you're getting from another organization that looked at the death rate. And how do those two compare and what do they mean? But when you drill down on them, they're all using the same data and just analyzing it differently to inform us along different lines. So we might hear that the case fatality ratio is 2.5% based on the numbers that we get out of China and now the other countries that have had confirmed cases and deaths. And that 2.5% of course is predicated on a denominator that's the confirmed cases, the 92,000. If we have triple or 10 times that number of cases across the world, 920,000, but we've had however many confirmed deaths, the actual case fatality ratio will be some number lower than that case rate. However, the RNOT is probably the same because that was studied differently and it is, you know, predicated on numbers that we do know about. The RNOT, the number of people infected by one person who has coronavirus in a group of 10 people is 2.5. It's not the same as that 2.5 case fatality rate. I can compare that RNOT, though, to influenza. The RNOT for influenza is 2.5. The RNOT for measles is 9. It's a much more contagious disease to those people who are susceptible to it. So it gives us different information. I just wanted to point out the credible resources that we in the healthcare field and hopefully those credible news agencies go to to get the source of truth. And that is the CDC, IDPH, and the World Health Organization. And this is the webpage, the home webpage for coronavirus disease, COVID-19. That is the CDC's webpage. I just pulled it up tonight to give you a picture of it. And it actually, if you go into each of the sections, what you should know, the situational updates and information for healthcare professionals, there is a variety of other information at all of those sites. This is also the information that IDPH utilizes when they provide guidance for us in this state. So it's all very consistent with each other and we do use the credible sources. To talk about local hospital preparedness, we, like I said, it feels like we've been working on this for To talk about local hospital preparedness, we, like I said, it feels like we've been working on this for two years because it's been so intense. So I went back to look at the date when we first started working on this as a healthcare system for our hospital and our associated healthcare facilities and associates. And we started this on January 20th. Goodness, that was a long time ago. So our infection prevention team, IP means infection prevention, started working with critical care and emergency department and our physician providers regarding Wuhan coronavirus and how to identify and readily inform people and isolate people who have cases that come into our facilities that might be consistent with what they're seeing in Wuhan, China at that time. The next day, we had enhanced triage procedures for our emergency rooms and our physicians so that they could identify patients who might have been exposed to this virus and take the correct infection prevention measures, like masking those patients and making sure that we put them in a room isolated from the rest of the population or the rest of the people who are in that healthcare center and do the appropriate things to prevent any transmission that could occur if we are interacting with that person. We sent out recommendations to leadership physicians in healthcare facilities. A nice best part, I don't know if you use that term here, but it's a format where you give a situation, a background, and assessment in your recommendations on whatever it is you're sending that memo about. So we sent that out on the third day after we started working on this. And then for a month, we created tools and resources for the entire healthcare system to use when they were evaluating what's happening with coronavirus in the world, in our area, and in our healthcare institutions.
So Kathy, you're asking, you're raising so many interesting questions, and I don't mean to interrupt normally.
Please do. I like the questions.
You prompted these. In a hypothetical situation where a person walks into your emergency room not feeling well and that is diagnosed as having it, what happens from that moment on, from that moment of diagnosis?
Right. So when they walk into the emergency room and there is some clinical, based on symptomology and risk history, either travel or exposure to somebody else with that patient that's identified at triage, and that person is symptomatic, they're immediately given a mask to wear themselves to prevent them from releasing their virus into our airspace and put in a room in the emergency department. It's an airborne isolation room, which is a negative airflow room. And then all healthcare workers who go into that room wear a special mask that prevents their exposure to that particular virus.
So there's an interim warranty in some type?
Yes, there is. And when that patient's in the room, the doctors, the clinicians evaluate them based on their symptomology and their risk history, they call the health department because we can only do testing with approval from the health department at this point in time.
Except the county health department?
The county health department. And they are getting their recommendations from the state, of course. We now have state labs that do the testing. So we get that approval, we collect the specimens. If they're ill enough to be admitted to the hospital, they're admitted to airborne precautions, airborne and contact precautions.
Do the tests have any kind of risk for false positives? And I'll tell you why.
Of course they do.
Yeah. I was in London and I had bronchitis.
Yes.
So I was coughing.
Yes.
And I didn't have my American doctor when I was overseas. And I know I scared the daylights out of that flight crew coming back from Heathrow to O'Hare. And I had to say, "No, I talked to my doctor on the telephone. He thinks I have either bronchitis or a touch of walking pneumonia." Because I didn't have a fever and I didn't have a sore throat, but I could see the panic. And so I wore a mask on the plane just to make the flight crew feel better and the other passengers feel better.
And may I say, that's our recommendation. You wear a mask if you're symptomatic yourself. You don't wear masks to protect yourself while you're out in public.
When I got home, I was told I was going to sleep in the basement. That's a common occurrence rather than a recent experience with coronavirus.
So, well, we can talk about that to the critical of the state, so yes.
I want to get that cure.
I guess.
There's no vaccine.
So there is no, there is no, like in Star Trek, that little device that they can put up to your face and know exactly what's going on. So it's all based on clinical judgment and knowledge of exposure history. And we have to react to that. Sometimes we're going to put patients in isolation and they don't need to be because they have influenza or one of the 20, 30 other respiratory viruses that are out there right now. But we do have tests for those, and if we identify it, then we can, if appropriate, release them from isolation at that time.
What's the length of time, the gestation period, such that you would keep someone in isolation in order to?
Is this a confirmed case or is this, we're still, is still a suspect case?
Well, maybe each. I mean, because my hypothetical is someone just not feeling well walking in.
Right. So it's difficult if we can't test because right now, we want to see a negative test from a patient before we take them out of isolation. And that is also predicated on the fact that we were very sure that you had the virus either by testing or by some other very different exposure risks and chest CT and that kind of thing. So we want to make sure you're feeling better, that your tests are negative, and that you have had sufficient time to be sure that you feeling better isn't a red hair.
Sure.
In other words, you started to feel better and then you go downhill again, which can happen with an illness like this. I can't give you an example. Timeframe is a little bit on a case by case basis, but they're monitoring that daily.
And people in the public should probably just socialize themselves to the notion that if an occurrence develops for them, they may be inconvenienced.
They will be inconvenienced.
And we can't get around that.
We can. That's true. And it's for their benefit and the benefit of their loved ones as well. So there's, there's a lot that goes into the decision. And it's not just care of the patient. That's the first thing. But then it's kind of the ring around that patient. And if you can explain it to patients and their family in that way, they're usually very good at complying with your recommendations, and that's what we hope for. Information is key. So we've created a lot of resources, toolkits for our healthcare workers to use if they are evaluating a person or for potential coronavirus or they're managing their illness while they're in the hospital. And we've also developed this for our outpatient areas and for home care. So that's the work that we've been doing. There's a lot going behind the scenes on this, and I don't want to get down in the mitty gritty. But I did want to point out that when we work on things like that, it's just not one department working on it. Senior leadership, which is part of our executive command in any kind of situation, that's a pandemic situation or a surge situation or even a water main break under the hospital, they're quite involved and bring the appropriate people to the table. So that's infection prevention, emergency preparedness, critical care, emergency department, inpatient units, procedure areas, environmental services, so important to our healthcare facilities. Executive command, of course, is our leadership. Engineering, if we have negative airflow rooms, we need to make sure they're functioning. And that's engineering's realm. Respiratory therapy, imaging, lab, outpatient, home care, it goes on and on. We bring them all to the table to work on this type of thing. And that's been going on at our facilities for the past month or so. Just recently, we completed CDC, not mandated, but prepared, hospital prepared list checklist to help find any gaps in our routine practices in our hospitals that we need to shore up in order to be able to deal with these situations. We've created action plans where the gap analysis showed as we should. And of course, there is a system, COVID-19 executive command, for the entire 28 hospital system, which is not just hospitals. There's a lot of other healthcare venues associated with that, including physician offices. Just today, CDC pushed out a healthcare planning checklist that is a mirror of the one that we used for the pandemic influenza planning a decade or so ago, and it's extensive. And it requires extensive coordination, as I said, between a lot of entities within the hospital, but also emergency medical services, home care activities, long-term care activities, and alternate care setting activities. A lot of work being done behind the scenes to prepare us for coronavirus. Now, the CDC knows that coronavirus is not just a hospital problem. It is a community and a world problem. They have developed resources, and I'm going to show you a few of them that I think are brilliant. This one is the interim guidance for business and employers to plan and respond to coronavirus. Just think about people who cannot go to work because either they are sick, it could be the coronavirus or other viruses, because there's others in the community, right? But they can go to work and provide the services that they provide. The schools, if there's a lot of coronavirus activity, might shut down in order to make sure that we're not passing around in the school setting. And therefore, there will be a lot of kids at home who need to be cared for by parents who might be going to work the camp because they have to care for kids at home. There might be an opportunity for some businesses to have their employees telecommute, you know, and work that way, but others won't be able to. There has to be human resource policies in place to deal with the fact that you will have people who might not have PTL any longer or sick leave any longer need to be at home during situations like this. So this covers a lot of things that a business or employer might need to look at in planning for something like coronavirus, quite simply. IDPH has a lot of documents on their webpage. I just wanted to show you that so that if you want to see how we're planning for this in the state, you can go there. And it's always consistent with the CDC guidance. They never deviate from that. Here's another community resource. It's guidance for administrators of childcare programs and schools. And they need to plan for this. So that's another resource that's available. Here's interim guidance for preventing the spread of coronavirus disease in homes. There are times that somebody, and I think there are going to be a lot of times, when somebody has COVID disease, but they're not sick enough to be in the hospital. They're going to have to care for the person with that disease in a home setting. And this is guidance. I'm doing this safely.
Is there a sense yet of what duration of the virus, once it invades the human body? Is it six weeks? Is it six months?
So are you talking to one individual person who has the virus? It could be as short as a day. So a subclinical infection might give you practically, you think you're coming down with something. But the virus is not getting totally replicating and causing that immune response that results in the symptoms you have for an infection and the body shutting down the virus. So that could be one day. A mild illness might be like a common cold, two, three days feeling miserable, but not terribly contagious once your symptoms of respiratory illness have been dampened down by your immune system. If you have severe disease, you could be sick for a week, two weeks, three weeks, perhaps even in ICU, and then be contagious for longer because the virus was able to replicate so readily in your virus and your immune system hasn't dampened it down. So I can't give you.
Yeah. So victory date is dependent on the individual's overall circumstances. And you don't know until you understand what that particular case is. Okay, thank you.
Exactly right. If you look at a population, I can tell you based on the data right now, 80 to 80% of a population of people who are infected with this disease will have a mild disease.
There will be fatalities, statistically.
There will be fatalities, and they have been, we have seen them in the older age group and in people with severe underlying conditions.
See these severe account conditions?
Underlying conditions. Cardiac, COPD, diabetes, people on dialysis. There are more risks to have a more severe disease. And you have more severe disease, you have more risk of death. Children have not been infected much by this. Across the world, there haven't been any deaths in children. And if they get the infection, it tends to be a mild infection. You don't even recognize it because it's a mild infection. So.
So you have a child that gets exposed to it and you would never know it's a parent?
No, but grandpa who's exposed to the child might be the one who gets the severe infection. Oh, this is interim guidance for discontinuation of in-home isolation for patients. It speaks to your question, Kevin. How long are you contagious? And this gives you guidance on evaluating this case by case basis if you're caring for somebody in your home. So we have a lot of good documents out there from the CDC, a lot of resources. And they have data as the, our understanding of the science of this virus and the science of the epidemic within the human population changes. I also expect that sometime we'll have a vaccine, and that might be given every year at the same time that we give vaccines for flu. Because this coronavirus is here to stay, but as more and more of us are infected and develop immune response to it.
Not to be flip about it, so a television commercial in September could take you ready for cold, full, and corona season?
It could. It could, absolutely. Yeah. So that's my presentation. I'm just going to open it to questions.
Let me, we'll start by asking, recognizing every trustee individually. Trustee Burke?
First question, do you have any guidance to anyone that in this community, you're a good shepherd, that thinks they have a symptom? Do you want them to call the hospital first before?
So always call. If you have symptoms, you don't want to go out and expose other people. You could be a person who should be at home, caring for your illness at the home setting and distancing yourself from others who might pick it up from you. So always call.
The reason I'm interested, I got both a phone call and an email from the Veterans Administration over at the federal. They said, they gave a member to call the nurse.
Yes.
And let us know when you come in because we want to meet you at the door.
Yes. If you are going, if they do advise you to come in, yes, they want to put a mask on you and put you in a room and close the door. Yes.
Well, thank you. Good presentation.
Trustee Burke?
Thank you for coming in. Yes, that was very informative. And I can't even, I can't even express how many questions I had throughout it. I mean, I was just like. But a big one was, you mentioned the masking and you said the person with the virus should be masked, but others should not. So others in public.
And others in public. So, but at home, yes. So if you're caring for a person at home, that person at home could wear a mask. And if necessary, because you can't tolerate a mask if you're coughing. The person has to take off their mask because they're coughing and can't breathe well, you could wear a mask to prevent yourself from being exposed to the virus at home.
I just noticed that, you know, you see on the news and things, people are at airports and they're wearing their masks.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, isn't it?
So what? So just to put this in perspective, when you're wearing a regular surgical mask like we wear in the hospitals, most of the times, we put those on patients so that they don't contaminate the air around them with the virus. Or we put them on the healthcare worker because when they are caring for the patient, it provides a barrier that those respiratory droplets will land on rather than on the mucous membranes of their face because they're down within three, two, one, you know, a patient often doing something, they're going to get coughed on. So to protect them, and this is from your regular droplet type, like your influenza, your kids who have RSV, your common cold virus, that just puts a barrier to the face. We also ask them to wear goggles if it's a highly contagious virus because the mucous membranes of your eyes are a way to the back of your throat. Your tear drops will just drain it back into the back of your throat. So in a healthcare setting, we rely on masks because the people caring for the patient need that for their protection. Out in public, where you don't know whether you're around anybody who's coughing because they have an allergy and it's draining into the back of their throat. Or like me, when I have a virus, I will cough for two or three weeks after the virus is gone just because of the irritation. I am not contagious, but nobody around me knows that, right? But most of the people around us, we're going to pick it up from other people by touching things, not by. So hand hygiene is what's really effective there. The mask is a false sense of security out in public. In China, though, a lot of people wear masks to protect themselves from smog and the particulates in the air. So they're used to wearing masks for those types of reasons, as well as some protection for infectious diseases. When you see somebody from another country who's wearing a mask, it could be that's just a cultural behavioral thing. Not in the United States, not so much. We typically don't do this. And we shouldn't because what's happening now, that people are buying masks for their use at home, and now in the healthcare settings, we're not able to get the supply of masks to care for the healthcare.
Yeah, I was in one of the clinics last weekend. They're like, we're really short on them.
We are. We're terribly short of our masks and we're really worried about that. So we're conserving in the healthcare settings. We used to put masks out at our. We used to put masks out at our respiratory hygiene stations in flu seasons so that anybody coming in who'd wear a mask, if they were going up on the unit, it just seemed to be a very public-friendly thing to do. Now we've taken those masks away because they just walk up and leave. People just come and they take boxes of masks home with them. So we put them with the registration people or with the nurses so that if somebody asks for a mask, we'll give them one, but they won't take that box of masks. So, right?
You're free to someone, right? So one more question, I'm sorry. So why is it, I mean, I know you said that like the elderly or someone who's, you know, might maybe susceptible. What's, I mean, and I'm not downplaying this whatsoever. But I, I mean, if I'm talking to you, I don't feel so bad about it, really.
Good, I'm glad.
I do, but I don't. But, but why is it, I mean...
Because we can't...
Why, my eight-year-old daughter and her friends think that everybody's going to die? Or turn into, you know...
And that's...
Because is it, is that just the media?
Yeah.
Well, okay, kind of.
Yes or no? It is going to be very prevalent everywhere in the world. We have a hundred percent susceptible population that this virus has entered. The, but, so everybody potentially could get the virus. But it's not terribly virulent for your normal, healthy person. Your body says, oh, no, this is something that's not good for me. But your immune system says, yeah, but I know how to get rid of it and works. So I'm getting rid of it. Those people who have underlying conditions or who are older, their immune systems aren't as capable of doing that. Especially if their, their body is always fighting the disease that their underlying condition is creating for them. And they're just more susceptible to complications if they get a viral disease as well. You might have heard that if somebody gets influenza, they are, they're susceptible if they're, if they have underlying conditions to pneumonia. Oftentimes, that's not an influenza pneumonia. That's a bacterial pneumonia that was able to set in because the virus had compromised, you know, the person while they were trying to get rid of it. And that's, that's the problem. So it's the complications. It's not... And for normal, healthy people, as I said, children are not getting all that sick. So if you want a message for your eight-year-old, say, if you get this illness, if your friends get this illness, it's not going to... I don't know if you want to say it's not going to kill you. Say something else.
That's serious?
But say, but we need to protect grandma, grandpa, you know, our neighbors, our older people with, who have cancer, whatever, whatever makes sense in your household to say. We want, we want to be sure that we're doing hand hygiene and doing good environmental cleaning and, you know, staying at home if we're sick because of those issues.
Sure. I want to ask a question.
We could be here because it's...
We could be here late.
Trustee Shaw?
What are, what are the major symptoms?
So if you have a mild symptom, you're going to, you're going to have, like, I'm fighting off the cold. If you have a more moderate, you might say, oh, I have the flu. You know how the flu makes you feel like you've been hit by a Mack truck? If you've got a severe disease, you're going to have fever. You're going to have a sore throat. You're going to have shortness of breath because it's gone deeper into the lungs. And that's a severe case. So that's pretty much the kind of three levels of... And somebody who has a mild or a moderate disease at the beginning could progress to severe case. So we always tell people at the beginning, you have a slight fever, you have a cold, monitor your symptoms. If it worsens, then you will need medical attention rather than taking care of this illness at home. But people with mild or moderate symptoms, and that's the way the disease stays, they can take care of their illness at home.
Major precautions?
Hand washing, number one. It just is. We touch our face hundreds of times a day with our hands. So if you were to happen to touch the, push the cart a jewel and it happened to have one of the respiratory viruses, this or any other, on that cart, and you go through the store and you pick up something and then you scratch your eye, you know, you have the ability to transmit it to your mucous membranes and now take it into the body. And that's where the virus likes to replicate, in the upper respiratory. So hand hygiene is number one. Cleaning of surfaces, if you're around a sick person, is number two. And then staying ill if you're home, because then you're the vector. You're the one who's going to take it to other people. So don't do that.
When you go to the supermarket, I always use the...
Yes, same attack, yeah. Isn't it nice to put those...
Very used to that, yeah. Thank you.
Trustee Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a senior citizen, I think I'm going to put myself into a windowless room with a bottle of super bowl and a bunch of...
Oh, there you go. Alcohol's a great cure. It kills viruses, right? No, I shouldn't say that. I'm busy, alcohol, you're rocking on your...
No worries.
This is going to injure.
So it's common sense, you know, avoid being around people who are sick. Do good hand hygiene.
Does a, does a flu shot provide any sort of preventive for this?
Not for this. The flu shot is specific for...
Specific for the flu, yeah. So I have a senior citizen question. Any thoughts on domestic airline travel for our senior with COPD?
Sure. Oh, for COPD. So, so somebody with underlying lung condition is, are you worried about the airplane or the destination?
Not the destination.
Not the destination, okay. Sitting on the airplane. So my husband's a pilot. So we've had this many times. And interestingly, if you go to the CDC, they will show you a cabin on the airplane and where a person with COVID is sitting and show you in the airplane what seats around that person might be at risk for picking up the virus.
You know, I read somewhere that, that the seats, the window seats are the best seats for them.
Because, because you're away from the common people?
Yes.
Possibly.
Away from the...
Very, very possibly, yes. So, but on an airplane, if you, you know, how can you avoid sitting next to them? It's, it's up for... So it depends on how worried you are about picking up the virus. But if you get up and go to the bathroom, right? I would make sure you wash your hands. After you've touched anything there, you wash your, you know, the, the hand washing. Take your Purell with you and maybe even your disinfectant wipes. And I can't tell you not to fly. I think it's safe.
Well, I think it is generally is as well.
Safe, yes. But I, and I wouldn't advise you to wear a mask on the plane. You could take one with you if that gives you some level of comfort. But a lot of people are uncomfortable having a mask for a long time and therefore, they adjust it. So anything that might have, any droplet that might have ended up on the outside of your mask, you're now adjusting with your hands. And if you, yeah, you can see where that goes. Just prudent, but I don't think it's a terribly scary thing to take a domestic flight, no.
Thank you.
Trustee Mitchell?
Well, I want to know how much of this is going to be on the exam?
Oh, you want me to submit an exam?
I did a, many years ago, my colleagues know, a master's in public health.
Yes.
And so this is, I'm like, so epidemiology classic. This was fabulous. This was really one of the, one of the best presentations I've seen. And what I appreciate is the facts and really getting that out there, hammering that home. The stuff that's going on in the media, the stuff that's going on online, that people are posting, tweeting.
Social media is sometimes the bane of our existence in healthcare.
I scream and I was trying to reply to friends and people that I knew and I just stopped, I can't. It's a full-time job. And these are, you know, well-educated people that you would think, you got better than that.
So it's good that you go keep yourself abreast of the facts so that when you see something scary online, you can go back to the facts and say, I don't think that's proper. Because there will be a lot of scary stories out there. And as always, people make assumptions. If this happened, it was caused by that. And sometimes there really isn't that connection.
Correlation and causation.
I ate Spanish rice at a friend's house when I was eight years old and had an upset stomach for two days.
And you still won't eat it?
I cannot smell Spanish rice.
My sister-in-law was poisoned by Red M&amp;M. She sure, so she won't eat Red M&amp;M.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you. That was fabulous. Really reassuring. Thank you.
Reach out at any time. You have my email address. I didn't give you a copy of the presentation, but I can send it to you. And therefore, if you need anything, certainly we'll help you. I'd also encourage you, if you have coronavirus questions, to do that 800 hotline number and encourage people in our community to avail themselves of that because they are the source of truth. And if they call the hospital, you know, we're busy to... I mean, we will answer the questions as, as best we can. But we love it when they get a consistent message from the source of truth in our area, which is IDPH.
And I, not from the school system, but I want to compliment our Barrington 220 schools. The superintendent had out one of the first notices to the, to the public of anybody. It was sort of publicized and it was representing facts. And it was, it's so helpful. And I, I hope that, you know, parents will take consolation of that. That it was no hysteria, don't worry about this, you can manage this.
So, and that's good to know. And because I deal with these facts all the time and I know infectious diseases, I have to tell you, I'm not worried about getting coronavirus. I get it myself. I will recover from it, like I recovered from the flu and from the cold virus and everything else that was in our area this year. I could be an unlucky one, I know, because I'm in the correct age group for that. But I'm not fearful of it. And I'm not fearful for my family. However, I am fearful of the disruption that having a lot of people afraid and a lot of people sick will create in our community. And I've gone out and I've bought, you know, cans of peanut butter and soup and bottled water just because I know that there may be a time where we won't be able to get to the store for our needs. So I, I've done that. You can go online, the CDC has a nice document on preparing for an emergency in home. And it's just the basics. Toilet paper, do you have toilet paper? Do you have enough medication for the next two weeks? If you have prescription meds? It's common sense. And I've done that myself.
I came on the podcast the other day. I went to go and get blueberries and some wine. And I come out and people are fighting with carts getting toilet paper and Klebex.
The wipes?
And what, what are you...
I actually needed, we needed toilet paper, but I had one last package. And then people were like, you got it.
You got it.
I thought you were... We're extremely grateful and thank you for the topic. I, as I mentioned earlier, I was on 170 regional mayors from Murphy'sville, Illinois on Sunday night. And I commend Mayor Lightfoot in Chicago and her team for some real leadership. You know, what she said, I think you validated very much. And I, while the potential of the severity and the spread of the virus, this is low, our preparedness is high. And, you know, what I heard last night on the White House call about this and also on Sunday night's call is, again ratified by what you said, do everything you can to slow the spread of the disease, minimize the mortality or morbidity. To your point, preserve the functioning of the healthcare system and minimize the economic and social impact. And it really is, I was flip about it before, but it's washing your hands, staying at home when you're sick. For those of us in local government, it's dusting off continuity of operations plans for this. And there's a variety of things that came up on the call last night about policies for mass gatherings in large community events. You know, we have two trustees up here who are part of a large veterans group. Just need to make sure that groups that meet and large members are aware of things so that proper protections can be taken.
And certain people might, might decide not to go to a large gathering because of their underlying, it's a fact, again. If you're armed with the facts, you can make the decision that you are comfortable with and that will put you at less risk.
We're grateful and I will leave a voicemail for Karen Leimer tonight and express my gratitude.
Oh, that's great, Nancy.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us. Thank you. We can move to something a little more mundane, but, but with somebody equally pleasant and have Kathleen Scott come up with a topic about economic development, which hopefully in Lake Barrington won't be affected by the coronavirus.
Hi. My name is Ross. I'm Kathleen Scott with Scott Partners. And I'm sort of summarizing.
Yeah, Kathleen, I'm sorry. I was going to, Trustee Burke sent in a report and I'll have the administrator provide it to the board and then lead into you. I wasn't aware of this, I'm sorry.
No, that doesn't, that's probably, no, I just wanted to, like, Trustee Burke cannot be here tonight. He's on vacation. But he wanted you to get your report that we had discussed. And then he's got some comments afterwards because he doesn't want to stay with thunder. And so myself and President Richardson wrote it after we...
Lower.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, what I'm going to do is review our economic development plan. Recapture everything since we put this plan into place back in 2018. So looking back over the past couple of years, I'm very proud of the economic development objectives that are small but feisty. Three-person committee has accomplished. As you know, the village's economic development committee falls under the purview of the absent trustee Andy Burke and the remaining two-thirds of the committee, our village administrator Karen Dalton Lang and of course Truly. In 2018, we developed the village of Lake Barrington's first ever economic development plan. As soon as the plan was adopted by the village, we created a timeline and we got to work on the objectives. The village joined the International Council of Shopping Centers and Trustee Burke and I attended the annual deal-making trade show in Chicago. We learned a great deal from a couple of experienced dealmakers at the event that took pity on us and spent a great deal of time explaining to us why everything that we had assumed was wrong. And that was on the right path and we are forever grateful. Village administrator Karen Dalton Lang and I spent the summer contacting business owners and scheduling visits. These connections provided positive interactions with many of the business owners who had little, if any, previous contact with the village and had not generally viewed the village as a resource. Hopefully, the owners will now feel more comfortable reaching out whenever necessary to Karen Dalton Lang and to the rest of the staff in the village. Our visits, excuse me, our visits with the businesses also provided answers to many of the questions in the economic development plan, such as the perceived daytime population needs of business employees and customers and the feasibility of having a small business forum. These responses allowed us to adjust our goals and take a more realistic view of the pathways and the barriers to economic growth in the village of Lake Barrington. Some of our goals were met, like the updating of the village newsletter thanks to village clerk Lisa Pena-Tolappa and the current overhaul of the business licensing system. Karen Dalton Lang, Lisa Pena-Tolappa, and I were all very excited to roll up our sleeves and get to work revamping the business licensing procedures, which had not seen updates in a very long time. And we eliminated numerous redundancies and streamlined the process for both business owners and the village. In the next step, we selected cost-effective, user-friendly municipal software program for business licensing. Implementation of this new system will begin this year and will create a village business database, which fulfills another goal of the economic development plan. Our other goals were doggedly pursued, like the objective to determine the feasibility of attracting specific commercial businesses to the village, such as a hotel or a fresh market-style grocery store. After many, many meetings and much research, the goal of attracting a developer with interest in building a hotel in Lake Barrington has been tabled for now. It's not forever, it's just for now. The interest isn't there, the pull isn't there. And we've had to be realistic about this. So that is, that's where the hotel stands for now. However, there may still be an opportunity to attract a small, upscale grocery store to the village in the foreseeable future. A lot will depend on property owners, owners of empty land, empty lots. And there are a few other factors that, you know, come into play. But that is still somewhat on the table. So summarily, it has been my pleasure to work with the village board and the village staff on these economic development objectives. And I remain available for future project-based endeavors. And honestly, I would just like to thank you all very much for the opportunity to participate in the village of Lake Barrington's economic development.
It's been our privilege and pleasure to have you do so. I, I'm happy to read for the record the comments of trustee Andy Burke, who as the administrator noted is not with us this evening. But I'd like this for the record. He states, "I want to thank Kathleen for all her great support of our economic development efforts. We accomplished a great deal as a team because of..." We accomplished a great deal as a team because of her leadership and drive. After climbing a steep learning curve, we came to realize that we are doing most things right for a town our size and that we do not need to spend significant taxpayer dollars in pursuit of new tax revenue generating opportunities. Going forward, our primary focus will be on supporting existing businesses so that they can thrive in our community while remaining opportunistic and attracting new business. With Kathleen's help, we have also streamlined several of our business-related processes, which has improved the efficiency of our staff while making ourselves even more business-friendly. Karen, Kevin and I now feel very confident in our ability to drive our continued economic development efforts going forward. Thank you again, Kathleen." Submitted by trustee Andy Burke. Well deserved. I'll simply recognize any trustee who has a question or a comment for Kathleen. Trustee Tom Sings?
Mr. President, yes. I just wanted to again thank you for all the work you did with the focus groups. That was a marvelous endeavor and you did a wonderful job for us. That information is going to be part of what we'll be doing in the next several years before we do it again, so thank you again.
It was, it was interesting, it was thought-provoking and I got to know a lot of great people I hadn't met before, so thank you.
Does anyone else see recommendations?
I do.
Please.
Trustee Sings? Kathleen, I gotta tell you, I have been so impressed with your energy, your enthusiasm and your unwavering commitment since I met you with the proposal for the expansion over on Pepper Road. It's been that long and quite, quite a feat of what you have brought that property through and all of us through and it's admirable and I really, really appreciate your energy and your enthusiasm. You are fabulous at, thank you very much for what you've contributed to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would agree, obviously, we, we had a vision for economic development, but we really didn't know what that vision was. And certainly you allowed us to focus in on what really we need to do for the size of community we are, but also you've done an awful lot to develop the economic part of the Pepper Park area, which has become a vital part of what we're doing and upgrading what we thought was a, whatever industrial and real business, but also a commercial area and that the path and everything else to it is definitely, and Pepper Park Coffee Committee.
Isn't it hard when you, when you go down Pepper Road now? I went down there earlier today and it's hard to remember what it was like the day that many of us were out there for the groundbreaking back in 2013.
And with your little baby up there.
Yes, and the tumbleweeds, there were actual tumbleweeds there and it was crazy. So really it was, it's remarkable how it's changed.
We had to unwind an awful lot of things because the original vision for the park was for folks who owned manufacturing companies that were in the city at the time, wanting to move out closer to their house. And that was the original vision back in the 60s and 70s. And it was actually a very practical, realistic vision at the time and no one would have ever anticipated the desperate need for sales tax that the state's finances has now required at municipalities. I think we've pivoted pretty effectively and I think you're a big part of the reason we pivoted. Your energy level is impressive and I say that as someone who was privy to that myself. You were always available for questions and for comments and you were willing to take on extra assignments and I was always grateful for that. And you didn't complain and say, can I get paid more for you just because I have a heck of it I'm getting that by Mrs. Hirsch. Suzy or Randy, anything you'd like to add?
I have no comment, thank you.
Thank you. We're grateful, we're grateful and we hope you'll be in touch and know that the welcome man is always up.
Actually, I'm going to be doing presentations at Lake Barrington Shores. I have a meeting there with Jamie next week, so, no, this week. So, yeah, it's, you can't get rid of me then, it's a week. So thank you, thank you all.
I recognize the administrator, she's going to kink me later.
I can't add anything else to what everybody's already said about how wonderful it's been working with you and I appreciate our give and take that we had in our relationship because we would brainstorm a lot and then try to whittle things down from there, so it was, it was quite exciting. So I wish you the best in your new position at Cancer Centers of America and for introducing me to the Barrington Area Chamber of Commerce. I hope you have a golf league this summer.
I'm still volunteering for the golf outing.
And so thank you very much for all your help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item six this evening is the first opportunity in the agenda and I realize it's an hour and 40 minutes into the meeting, the public to address the board on non-agenda items, I see no one seeking recognition, so we can move to the consent agenda number seven. As is our practice, there is an ability to move by omnibus vote items on the consent agenda in Illinois and co-operations municipalities to do this on a single unanimous call vote of the board trustees and the village president, that groups and set of designated ordinance or resolutions or motions placed together for the purposes of this single vote. Following the motion second, brief discussion may be held on designated item. If a longer discussion or debate is needed, any trustee or village president may request that the item be removed from the current motion. Those will be discussed and considered during the regular course of the meeting as they may appear on the agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be received by the village board and will be enacted by one motion in the form of that listed above. There'll be no further discussion on these items if the discussion has decided the item will be considered. Seven A is Home Rule Sales Tax Amendment. There will be a motion to approve an ordinance amending our village code related to Home Rule Sales Tax Title II Business and Licensing and that will be ordinance number.
Six.
Six, thank you. B is sale or donation of surplus property, community room shares. We may receive a donation of used chairs from the community for the community room from Gallagher Insurance, Risk Management Consulting located in Schaumburg. We need a motion for ordinance number 2020-07. C, reduction in number of liquor licenses with the recent closure of the Orshard Road located at Northwest Highway. We, it's necessary for the removal of two liquor licenses from the village code, as is our practice historically. This is not new or unique, so we'll have a motion to approve ordinance number 2020-08. And ordinance amending Chapter Two Liquor Regulations Title II. And then D, the volume cap resolution, Lake County Partners, we've done this every year for years and years and years, contacts Home Rule Communities in Lake County every year to request pooling together of the volume cap to assure the best use of our collective private activities and allocation county-wide. And that will be motion to approve revolution number 2020-R3. Thank you. May I have a motion in block?
Sure.
By trustee Schaller?
Second.
By trustee Mitchell, thank you both. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Rigby?
I'm.
Trustee Damson?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda item eight is the treasurer's report, Mrs. Hirsch.
Good evening, everyone. I did mention this earlier, but for the benefit of our viewing public, I wanted to congratulate the board, finance chair trustee Rigby and the village staff for doing necessary steps and doing the hard work to make sure the village remains on sound financial footing. This is recently recognized by Booties, an outside rating agency, by increasing the village's bond rating from AA2 to AA1. This is especially notable for a community in the state of Illinois where we were plagued by dinner reports of resident exodus, declining state finances and burgeoning public debt. It's hard to shake that association. So exercising home rule authority by passing the sales tax and raising the tax levy, maintaining steady fund balance and low debt was some of the known strengths. So while the only major weakness mentioned, a relatively small village size, is something that's really beyond our control. So once again, I really wanted to mention that and make sure the public is well aware that this is really a big deal and something we should publicize to all the residents, make sure they're aware of it. So from there, we're going to review our financial statements for the nine months ended January 31st, 2020. You can look at the flash report on page two of the report. You'll see we have assets totaling $2,381,000. Our current liabilities are $389,000, our equity is at $1,992,000. So you'll see that our assets equal our liabilities plus our equity, so the balance sheet is in balance. It's always a good thing if you're an accountant. Revenue for the first nine months is $2251,000 and our expenses is $227,000, resulting in net income of $224,000. That's compared to at this point last year, $291,000 for the nine months in fiscal year 2019. Building permanent revenue is still lagging this year, we've talked about this each month, that really hasn't recovered. At this point, we're $114,000 lower than our fiscal year 19. So as we've done each month, we're going to take a look at what we'll call regular operations and income or loss and that's below our bullet line in the flash report. We're going to pull out any major expenditures for road work. There was none this month, to mention this month, but in total, there's been $48,000 this year. We pulled those numbers out, our net income from regular operations is $272,000 and that's compared to last year at $317,000. So we'll flip over to pages 10 and 11 of the, we'll get the budget to actual report and you'll see for the nine months, we're three-quarters of our way through the year, so it's 75%. So we're kind of looking for any that's trending outside of the normal 75% actual to budget. In totality, our revenues are right at 75% actual to budget, so the lows are bouncing on the highs, which is always good. Our sales tax, excuse me, our real estate tax revenues, that's always collected upfront, so you'll see we're 100% per year. So some of these differences are timing. The only thing of note to mention, as I mentioned, you just already told us, building permanent revenue, excuse me, cable franchise fees, that is low, but that's big quarterly, so it looks like we're halfway through the, you know, it's 50% budget to actual. We'll hit that third quarter shortly and we'll be right at 75% budget to actual, so nothing concerning there. Page 11, we can look at the expenditure side and you'll see our total expenditures are at 63% actual to budget. Nothing really to point out there, let me see if there's anything. The biggest difference is the operational expense throttling. This has to do with the Ozley grant work and that has not taken place this year as planned, a little bit longer to determine with the state and get that going with the state. You know, when we're working on budgeting, it's really, it's not coronavirus, I swear. I have a duct allergy, so sometimes after our new lungs, no, 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 whatever. Okay, our fiscal year '21 budgeting, you getting your water?
Yes.
Okay, I want you to start coughing, sometimes this is.
You can't stop.
That's something I don't know. Would you like to cough drop? It might be hard to talk, but yeah. No, thank you. It would be very hard to have it, probably, and that might be, that might be worse. Okay, so as I started to mention, all our budgeting is based on work and doing our estimated actual. And so each month I will update you when we have a new month, then I'll base that, I will compare that to what we've estimated for that month. That's easy to do, I'm having to flip back to page nine. I'm sorry, I need to go backwards because I don't know if it's going to change here. So page nine, I'm looking at January and these are our actual numbers and in January we're showing a net loss of $64,000 at the very bottom, I know these numbers are very small. And our projections are estimated actually, actually we're budgeting a $55,000 net loss. So it's slightly worse than anticipated, not concerning, not, not really affecting what we're going to do with our budget, but as I mentioned, I will point that out each month, we have three more months to go to update our estimate and I think we will make sure that we're at least close before we close out our budget for the next fiscal year '21. Okay, any questions on the general fund before I move on? Okay, page 14, we'll have our motorfield tax fund. Currently, there's about $38,000 of current assets, so plenty of funds in there to work on roads next year that will be in our budget for next year. Normally the fund is printing now about $17,000 a month, that's $10,000 from MFT and $7,000 from the TRF, excuse me, that's the transportation rental fund. As I mentioned, there's no planning expenditures in that fund for this year. Page 18, the water sewer fund. We have net current assets in there of $1,516,000, so we're making sure we keep adequate reserves in that fund for any unplanned major expenditures. And there actually no planning expenditures in that fund for this year remaining. Everything that was planned this year has been taken care of. All my comments about the funds before moving to the accounts payable unless there's any questions.
Questions for the treasurer?
Okay, I'll just mention, you know, the council warrants have been reviewed and are here in order for your approval. There are a few unusual invoices this month, I'd like to usually point those out for you. Warrant A, Blackboard Inc., that's in the amount of $2,495, that's the annual fee we pay for the rapid calling system and that's coming from the Fire EMS Impact Base. City grows in the amount of $2,499, that's a new vendor for us and that's bringing annual fee for the business license software. Domer valves for $2,660 and that's for clay valves for the high-service pump and the water sewer account. And energetics for $10,000, that's the final payment for the SCADA system. Is that right? Okay. Thank you, Karen. You instructed me about 15 times on that. And then for warrant B, Genesis Technologies for $8,300, that's for a new copier that was recently installed, village child replaced the failed copier. And then lastly, Mr. Ducked in the amount of $1,980 for duck cleaning in village hall.
Yes, to help reduce allergy.
Yeah.
You're all ready to clean your hair?
Yes.
This is one of the rooms that got done.
Cleanerator already.
So all these amounts, you know, follow them budget parameters, so there's nothing concerning there. So, any other questions on the warrants?
I want to congratulate trustee Rigby and you and Debbie and Karen for the bomb raid. I'll use a sports metaphor, this was a grand slam.
Absolutely.
Really spectacular and your advocacy skills were front and center in making that happen. I argue for a living, that's how I earn my daily bread, so I appreciate it when it's done well on our behalf by others. And, I mean, you turned it in a paper, you nailed it last.
Thank you. Yeah, we are proud of that.
We're very grateful, thank you. Debbie as well. Further questions for the treasurer? If not, the chair would like a motion to approve and block agenda items A, approved financial savings after January 31st, 2020. B, pay bills in the amount of $177,438.75 as listed on the accounts payable warrant A dated March 3, 2020. And C, pay bills in the amount of $49,340.79 as listed on the accounts payable warrant B dated March 3, 2020. May I have a motion in block?
Sure.
Second moved by trustee Mitchell, second by trustee Thompson, thank you both gentlemen. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Mitchell?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Rigby?
I'm.
Trustee Schaller?
Yes.
President Richardson?
Yes, thank you. Agenda item nine to save the administrator's report.
Sure. First, I'll give a little Fetterling Park update, we've been talking about that tonight. Almost final, final plans were submitted today and trustee Mitchell and myself will be reviewing those. The major aspects of the park, which include the walking trail, the fitness station, the observation pier and pond enhancements around the perimeter of the pond for the native grasses are still in the bid, docks and everything, so we'll be looking at that. We hope to get this finalized and then go out in April for bids and hopefully have a recommendation in May for a contractor and we're crossing our fingers that things come in on budget. Secondly, our IT consultant has recommended training for staff on IT security. The training is part of the general IT security recommendations that trustee Rigby and the IT committee made in the IT technology report we commissioned last year. And the most common way for malware or ransomware to occur is through clicking on a link in an email. So a lot of these big things that you hear about with towns and things getting into trouble, it's just an accident by somebody clicking on an email. We purchased a three-year subscription to a company called Nobi4, which were about almost $1,600, which. $1,600, which covers all users with an @lakebarington.org account. And so tomorrow, everybody with an @lakebarington.org account, you'll be receiving an email with the security awareness fundamentals and a SPOT the Phish game, and that's Phish, P-H-I-S-H. These are the first two recommended modules, which I wanted to send it out to everybody, including the trustees with the @lakebarington email addresses, so you can kind of get a flavor of the first testing that we'll be, that testing, but training we'll be doing. And giving everybody a link to do the training and submit it, and hopefully be able to follow that. So it's kind of a kickoff, but I sent it to all of you, and if any of you want to train yourselves more, let me know, and I'll keep you on our training list, the same training I'm going to be sending out to staff. So just let me know if you want to be included in the future training. So, that's it.
Questions for the administrator? All right, we can move to agenda. Thank you, Karen. Clerk's report.
Village Hall is an early voting site for the March 17, 2020 general primary election. Early voting started yesterday and will continue through the 14th. The hours are 9 to 5, Monday through Friday, 9 to 2 p.m. on Saturday. And March 17, election day polls are open from 6 a.m. to 7 p.m. Next is yard waste collection, starts April 1st. Stickers are still $1.75 a piece, and can be purchased at Village Hall, remixed now or more works. Another item is the 2020 census. Just a reminder that on March 12 through the 20th, you'll get an invitation to respond online to the 2020 census. March 16 through the 24th, you'll get a reminder letter. If you haven't responded yet, March 26 through the 3rd, April 3rd, you'll get a reminder postcard. April 8 through the 16th, a reminder letter and a paper questionnaire. And April 20 through the 27th, you'll get a final reminder postcard before they follow up in person and will be knocking on your door. So answer upon my.
It's important that we get counted.
Yes, it is.
And then the sheriff will come and escort you, fill out your form.
That's what I have.
Questions for the clerk?
All right, we can move to reports of the standing committees. I'll merge the two that I'm responsible for. And I have been spending a lot of time, US Conference of Mayors, the White House Committee of Representatives, and what Mayor Lightfoot of Chicago has convened regionally. That's why we thought it was a good idea to have Good Shepherd present tonight. You know, with an older population relative to the overall state population, we have to be especially vigilant on this. And the good news is precautionary steps are pretty straightforward. They really are pretty straightforward. And we'll certainly continue to monitor. There are great links, as she showed us in the presentation tonight. I check the CDC, one every day, also the Lake County and the city of Chicago websites pretty much every day. And I don't know that we need a policy yet, large gatherings, but I will ask the administrator to look out for two things that I've learned on these calls. Number one, start tracking any and all expenses, including time and overtime, associated with preparations for the virus, because there's a large federal pot of money that's going to be available to reverse municipalities on this. But Mayor Lightfoot's team was very clear about this, but if you don't have a good, clear system of tracking those expenses, your chances of getting it go down to nil. So I'll ask Debbie and Peggy to huddle with Karen on this. To the extent we start doing things, incurring expense, whether it's staff time or otherwise, we need to make sure that we keep careful tabs on that. And a business continuity plan, in the event that, heaven forbid, someone in this building becomes sick, we want to make sure that we have the ability to maintain municipal operations. So I looked at the old, two years ago now, the plan that I keep on my desk for emergency preparedness, and I think it's probably a good idea to revisit that with an eye towards its provisions relative to addressing this problem should it become a issue in our community. So that's my report tonight. I can move to community relations, which we're not supposed to have any because of the virus, special events, which we're really not supposed to have, and veterans affairs. You guys can all like each other, but you're not supposed to get together.
Thank you, Mr. President. Veterans will be selling masks. Yes, well, the veterans of Lake Barrington Shores want to gratefully thank the village of Lake Barrington for their continued financial support of their efforts to work very well towards the healthy now with veterans of Lake and McHenry County. The veterans, thank you again very much for your support. Next, with veterans, on Sunday, March 29, Councilman Sean Caston, representative, excuse me, Sean Caston, will have a Veterans Era 50th Anniversary Commemorative Ceremony at Linnick Lake Barrington Shores from 1 to 2:30 p.m. Veterans who served during the period, November 1, 1955, to May 5, 1975, regardless of location, are eligible to receive a lapel pin. Veterans of this era are encouraged to call Marichalik Veterans Affairs Case Worker at 630-520-9450 if they have any questions. The deadline is 23 March, and your application must include a copy of your DD 214, for those of us who have those. Next, I'm passing around a brochure from the veterans of Lake Barrington Shores. It's an important digest of veterans' benefits, and will be made available to as many Lake and McHenry County veterans as possible. It, one of the major issues for veterans and their families as they age is they have issues that come up, including, for example, death, and what the benefits are that they can get from their government regarding whatever the issue is. And this brochure provides them with the information to find out exactly what needs they have may be fulfilled. Moving on, please, everyone on the board, if you feel you're a perfect person, raise your hand.
Well, Karen.
So, leading off with that, one of my personal business issues is when moving toward a destination, I frequently have difficulty to, at the correct point, sharing or updating the status of my movement to the destination with those who play a role in that movement. And here's an example. I'm working on one of our community strategies to sustain and build our village brand, utilizing Friar Farm as a community gathering space. And there's several tactics that we're working on. One is we're adding two concerts to the one we already have, and one of those concerts is a country and western concert. And we're, I made discussions with a young lady or a woman who teaches and does line dancing, and so she's going to be looking at the opportunity, the possibility of doing line dancing, encouraging line dancing at the country and western concert. So, and one of the other tactics that we talked about during our brand meeting on Saturday was atypical Friar Farm events. And under that, we have expanding special events at Friar Farm for residents and their guests. For example, resident birthdays, wedding showers, wedding special anniversaries, and allowing these special event hosts to provide caterers for their events. And the caterers may in turn suggest Friar Farm to their clients. So we'll prepare cost schedules based upon legal and very important staff issues, and how we may require staffing. By the way, Lake Barrington Shores would like to refer business to Friar Farm if their web space is blocked. And another tactic I'd like to speak to tonight is the tactic that I labeled "What Else?" And we'd like to, we're talking about using the Village Newsletter as a tactic to market these events or special event opportunities for village residents. And part of doing that is we're considering we're expanding the newsletter to six or eight pages and add village businesses to distribution. And we've already had a show discussion with trustee, excuse me, Burke about that. And then as part of that, adding businesses to distribution, considering offering sponsorships to village businesses to offset the additional costs of the expanded newsletters. Adding, for example, what we might term a spotlight position and business information to both the newsletter and the Lake Barrington Shores newsletter's village article. Every month, I write an article regarding the village in the Shorelites newsletter. This will be included in that. And also, while LBS residents receive the newsletter, we've been given permission to provide additional copies to their lodge gathering place for additional pickups. And there'll also be, of course, as usual, additional copies at Village Hall. That finishes my report. Any questions?
That's a great idea. It actually should be. Questions for trustee Thompson? If not, the chair will recognize the administrator for purposes of delivering trustee Burke's economic development report.
Sure, I'll just read what trustee Burke read and ask it out of your ear to you, so pretend I'm talking with his voice. With Karen's support and urging, I participated in ICMA's webinar on best practices for retail recruitment. Several case studies were presented along with some guidelines for how to best attract retail businesses to our town. The key takeaway to me was that we confirmed how challenging it can be to develop new businesses in the town with as few residents as we have, with low density, outstanding no formal downtown area. Karen and I will be following up with the consultants on some benchmarking and analysis opportunities in the coming weeks. I will give a more thorough update on this next month. Thanks, Andy.
We can move to 11E, Finance Action Administration, trustee Rickby.
Thank you. Just one comment. There is an IT forbidden eagle, right? And along those lines, in this piggyback, you know, one of Karen and the president talking about, there's a book out called Perfect Weapon. It's written by David Sanger. It has to do with cyber warfare. Sorry, cyber warfare. And it's a very insightful, I don't know if you've heard of it, you know, it's a heck of a story that the guy's telling. It was published in the New York Times, very up to date on the things that are going on in the area. The highlight is that our government doesn't know how to handle this. Literally, does not know how to deal with it. Both offensively, the major effort our government has been defensive, like we are. Went through training to have it stop this thing.
Well, it's even sometimes the things that we don't even think about, and that's, I mean, I were talking about this with our IT consultant. One of the examples of the ISMA conference, I went to the ISMA, was, we all heard about the Target attack a few years ago when that happened. Well, how they got in was they went through the...
That's what this book is about.
Yeah, the HBC company that had access to something that didn't have protection, and so they were able to get into the back door.
Yeah, there's two kinds of businesses in America, those that have been hacked and those that don't know they've been hacked.
I'm still trying to change my password on that Windows 365 or whatever.
That's all right.
Thank you. Are there questions for trustee Rickby?
What was the title, what was the author of that?
The Perfect Weapon, dated Dave Sanger. It's on Amazon.
Fantastic. Well, one of the things with first responders and other mobile workforces, there's two kinds of data. Data in motion, that's network security, and then data at rest on the device that connects to the network. And so as 5G comes online and makes data at rest on devices, essentially in real time connected always to the networks, the risk of penetration through the device becomes significantly greater. So having an enterprise device that's purpose-built with more robust security than a typical iPhone or Samsung Galaxy consumer device, which has low-grade security, is going to be more and more important, more and more important. And we both spent a lot of time on that, so. We don't have any operations where devices are used to access or conduct, because if not, we can talk about that offline.
Just basically, just...
11F, Open Space and Village Facilities, trustee Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've come to three five minutes once. Village Administrator Doug Lang and I met with consultants this past week, or actually, it was Friday morning, last week, right? Yeah, this past week, at Friar Farm to talk about the plans and get a little more sketchy out for our memorial garden, where the site of the house, the former house was on the Friar property. And the idea is that it would be low-key, a memorial garden that could honor veterans of the different branches of service, as well as first responders, firefighters, anyone else that someone would like to memorialize in a meditative, contemplative space, because it will not be lighted, illuminated, flagpoles and that sort of thing, just because of all sorts of issues of cost and expense there to maintain. And we're looking at contemplative paths and the inlaid bricks that can be engraved, and then other things that we could do to recognize people who made major contributions.
Do those bricks be like the ones at LBS?
Yes.
I would suggest we might want to turn them memorial stones.
We could do that as well. Instead of just bricks. It's all metalworking, isn't it? Exactly. Memorial stones, thank you very much.
I think that was the term they used too, when we were talking about memorial stones.
Yes. And also, the veterans would obviously work with you if you'd like that.
And I appreciate that offer very much. It's a wonderful idea. And to apologize for my thickness like a brick, so. I'll admit, I own up to it. I'd like some of it.
No, I'll never own up to it.
Couple of other things. If anyone is interested in the lobbying days in Springfield through Baycock Barrington area council governments, the Illinois Municipal League, we're trying to coordinate these trips at these times. April 29th right now is the date, and then April 30th, so.
So you're going to have it on the 29th for home elections?
And if anybody is interested, I can give you the information. I can forward it all around if anybody's interested in that as well. Baycock now has a fantastic thing that we're referring to as a bill tracker, which is basically a sophisticated Excel spreadsheet that Jan Schimpf, our administrative person at Baycock, has put together and keeps track of any bill that sort of concerns municipalities and the issues that we have to deal with, and keeps it updated regularly. So if you hear about something, see something and want to know more, you can call Baycock, you can text or email me, and we'll give you the immediate status of what's going on, where it is, and what our position is recommended to be on these things.
I know we got a notice on this hoop house legislation from Baycock.
Yes, there's quite a bit, quite a bit going on. And sometimes these things move through sort of silently by the, in the darkness.
Sure.
Unless somebody is reading and watching, which is what Baycock is trying to do on these things. Just little lines, little changes, and you're like, wait a minute, that means that would eliminate our ability. And one of the things that is under constant tact, it appeals to our ability to interact, is anything that sort of squelches or squashes home rule. And it's slipping into bills in the sneakiest of ways, and so this is where...
Well, they've done such a great job making the state so successful that they want to share that same skill.
And because we're so successful at managing our money, they want to get our money.
That's right.
Take it back, so that's going on. The third thing, which is very exciting, and I will be sending around information to you electronically rather than in paper, respecting this. It's called the Greenest Region Compact, that many villages and municipal groups and organizations in... in the state have gotten involved with, sponsored by the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. And basically it is a framework for a village such as ours or Deer Park, which is now very actively, has done this, looking at everything. So it's, if you take our facility assessment and take it several steps wider and longer, looking at what are we doing, for example, that's green energy-wise. Some villages have consolidated and moved in that direction. It can be as simple as replacing our light bulbs with LED, reviewing these things, the upgrade of our furnace, our heating systems, our cooling systems, all of these things. But it's basically taking a stand and saying, we will work to make sure that the things that we do and we promote within our village are green and are in alliance with moving in this direction and trying to acknowledge what we're doing. So I will send this around, and it's my hope that we, upon review, the next month or two, can look at this and adopt this and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Gee, Public Safety and Game Communities, trustee Schaller.
Mr. President, in light of what we heard earlier this evening, the Lake County Municipal League is sponsoring a coronavirus virus information session tomorrow evening up in Ron's Lake, and I will be attending that as the first responders, municipal township, county staff, and local officials that provide an update on the virus, the people that we have today, preparedness, communication efforts, and how Lake County residents can protect themselves. So I'll be doing a report following that, but that's tomorrow evening up in Ron's Lake. Lake County Sheriff's Department, I want to welcome Sergeant David Tomassello to us. We've been waiting a while here. Coming up, just kind of a report from January. The Sheriff's Department in Lake Barrington alone did 85 business checks, 30 extra patrol houses, 58 extra patrol hours, 139 extra patrols and subdivisions. In addition to the regular, they do an awful lot on RBF. But I wanted to welcome the sergeant to us this evening, and if you bring us something in on the other activity that we should be aware of.
Thank you. Again, Sergeant Tomassello. I'm on highway patrol afternoon shift. My 16th year there, a little background, I did seven on highways, seven investigations, and the last of those two as a sergeant, that's a promotion. So I'm filling in tonight for Deputy Chief Thompson and or Robin, staying with who comes in, so this is my first rodeo. As for activity, there was really nothing significant, which is a good thing apart from some rowing soccer players, that's your sports complex. Apparently the soccer games they held in the evening, there was some unruly players and parents, and they, they called us out and then reached out to us again for an extra patrol, so we sent a few deputies out for presence, and there was no further, or actually any action really needed, because they were all going first round. With us being there, there were no issues the second round. The players and the two teams that were getting there, I believe they banned some of those players or parents from the facility.
And this was soccer, not hockey?
Soccer, correct.
Oh, that's poodles!
Yes. Beware the soccer players. So that's really it for, for significant activity. One announcement we do have, which is good, is we have activated a traffic unit, specialized traffic enforcement unit. So we've taken three deputies, as of now, we're three strong, hoping to grow to six. Those three separate shifts, one that'll be on each obviously. So if we have concerns in areas of traffic complaints or speeders, or wherever it may be, we can utilize those three deputies, whatever shift it's on, to focus on the traffic enforcement while we allow some deputies who are on the streets to respond to calls.
That sounds wonderful. That's what you guys do. I'll tell you, from around 14 on Kelsey Road up to 22, people think it's the German Autobahn.
Oh, I bet, yeah.
And it's astonishing. I mean, my, my street is a quarter of a mile north of 22, and I think people are going 65 miles an hour by the time they get there. It's just astonishing, so I, I can't thank you enough. I think Kelsey Road is very vulnerable and River Road, but especially Kelsey from 22 all the way up to where the river Kelsey split occurs. I understand that people want to get where they're going, but all it takes is a child on bicycle getting killed, and, and so I urge you to expand those efforts, and I applaud the sheriff for doing it.
Thank you. And I, just the presence alone, but we'll also be obviously, and force as well. So if there are areas, Sergeant Struck is leading, he's in charge of the unit at this point. So if you want to filter any, any information for areas or complaints, those will be directed to him, and then he'll dispatch.
You may not have data on this, this is a different topic, but I'm just curious, and if you don't have data on it, I certainly understand. January 1st, Illinois decided that everybody could buy recreational marijuana. Has there been any notable increase countywide in intoxicated driving because of cannabis?
We have some deputies that are DRE, drug recognition certified, so we are focused on that now. As for an increase, I'd say...
Too early to tell?
Too early to tell. It's probably not increased, but now we're looking more at, so I'm assuming it will be a time.
All right. I want, I want to be fair to the other trustees. Are there questions for the sergeant, trustee Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you happen to handle regarding the speeding issues? Do you happen to have a schedule of when you'll be in Lake Barrington?
You and your Mustang.
I'm in Lake Barrington every day, first of all.
That's my one favorite.
Great Mustang?
Yeah, that great Mustang with the charge of bulldogs, decal and that bad.
Doesn't like stop signs, goes right through them.
Can't blame another day for that.
He's practicing for that.
Further questions?
Just one more please. In all seriousness, thank you, because that's really, you know, and it's an issue on Kelsey, not only to know where you are, but from Kelsey going toward, when it becomes River Road, there are some issues in there too.
Oh, I, I've seen people take the big S-turn down the hill on Miller Road too, go like a split, and you just worry about pedestrians or bicycles, cyclists.
It's a deer this time of year.
Where I get the most complaints are from actual residential neighborhoods. And all our speed limits in residential neighborhoods are basically 25, except for some areas by the schools which are 20, but that's, that's where another people, and you know, you talk to them, and it's, it's your neighbors, because that's who's going into your neighborhood.
Right. That's the losing part of those. They're enforcing the traffic signs with speeds within. It's the ones, a lot of the times that are living there complaining about it that are actually offenders.
You'll be seeing the movable speed limit slowdown sign that we borrow from Cuba Township from time to time throughout our town the next few weeks, because we've got several streets lined up for it.
That's great. That's great. Further questions?
I just wanted to, I know that their alignment, which is this public social media notification system, had indicated some break-ins, additional break-ins in Lake Barrington Shores, and detected, indicated that most of those were unfounded, that there haven't been any more recent, has not been any more recent activity than there was up till last year, and those are still under investigation.
Correct. Actually, I spoke with him on local, and he mentioned that, and he brought that up.
Yes. And the other problem that we've had throughout the village that's pretty well calmed down since one individual was apprehended?
Yes.
Yeah.
No question.
A lot of video of those accidents has decreased dramatically.
Yes.
But it's still a good idea for people to lock their cars, not leave anything of value noticeable to the outside.
Yep. Lock them up. Don't, if you're warming up your vehicle, don't leave the keys in it, don't tie it, you don't let the ignition start, because we see those, those frequently during the cold season. And now spring breaks right around the corner, once the weather starts turning, then those, the increases in the drivers. And this is a current opportunity, go walk through subdivision typically, check door handles, unless online, unless something's visible, it's, it's that much.
Right. They have to, but if it's not there, it could be seen.
They'll find it next morning. Yes.
Well, we appreciate you being with us tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, just one other thing that's related to this, it reminded me when he talked about having a special sort of traffic enforcement unit. And we've had these discussions in Baycock with people going, oh, you know, we shouldn't have our own police department, and we should do this, the contracting. And that's an example of something that you will pay dearly to be able to have that for the investigation into break-ins and things. We have, we have the Lake County Sheriff as our police department. And this is a fabulous benefit that I keep talking to Baycock colleagues.
The resources that you've provided.
It's incredible. And that's, that's just, that immediately, the light bulb, you know, came on and said, hey, that's why we have this relationship.
So it's appreciated.
And you thought it was going to be about Tower Lakes, but no.
Yeah, I really thought that's who you were going.
That guy knows me.
I can vouch for that. It's one-stop shop, and I've seen it from the traffic enforcement when I started, all the way through investigations, and a long time, the manpower, it seems, for investigations for cases like the murder reason why not.
And one of our neighboring villages that is always thought is very affluent, is paying a fortune to store a vehicle that was involved in a fatality.
Yeah. I just keep those forever.
By their police department, and they said, how long do you have to keep this? And he says, forever. And we have to maintain it as evidence. And he said, that's just one of the ones that we have to maintain. And I said, so, thank you.
We'll make sure you get their, the lead-footed trustees license notes.
Thank you for spending the OHS.
Appreciate it, Sergeant. God bless.
We hope it's been good entertainment.
Oh, yes. I may do that, no problem.
Awesome. We'll take it.
Thank you.
Robin and Lieutenant Kerr. As far as the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, I don't know if you saw, but the fire department's traditionally due to building inspections for safety. Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District had a couple individuals impersonating fire department personnel and going into businesses, I believe in our industrial park, claiming they were from the fire department and charging a fee to do an inspection. So just for the awareness, the department does not charge. They do inspections on a periodic basis, but if you see anyone impersonating and trying to charge, notify the department or obviously ourselves, because it's not, not a good thing. But they go back apparently to the same people because they were paying all the time, and so they wear their uniforms and all that, so it's not a good thing. Barrington Countryside is still looking at station number three down the Barrington Road, and have finalized anything with that. And the, well, county department is doing a mobile integrated health program, a pilot program, or matter of fact, if you want to be a firefighter, they're taking applications and testing, and they will have a written exam this week. Top 25 will proceed, so if you want to be a firefighter with repairs for that. Briefly, as far as gated communities, the only thing I have to report is our new developer, MI Homes, is having a grand opening this Saturday from March 7th, from 11:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. So if you have an opportunity to stop by and just identify yourself in the village, let them know you're obviously there to help, credit's important.
Is it March 8?
March...
Saturday.
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 From 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Nicole is in charge of that, I left a message for her as far as what, what's happening, but I think they're just getting into spring. As far as sales, like in LBS, they're 35 right now on the market, ranging from about 100 to 60 to 550,000. So this is the selling season and buying season, so you know anyone wants to move into the village. We've got telegraphs, we've got LBS, we've got tech in the backyard.
That's right.
And a buyer report. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for trustee Schaller?
Just, it was quite a bit of discussion in Baycock about this third station and concerning confusion over where they're trying to locate it now.
Well, they work by the school, they've given up that.
They are now looking diagonally in the lowest part of Barrington Road 59, across from the Advocate and Good Shepherd Center in the wet area there.
On the weapons there.
It is.
Across from Good Shepherd's?
You mean the Health and Fitness?
Health and Fitness Center.
On, on South Barrington Road.
Across from Grove.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so there's, it's created animosity between Barrington Township, the village of Barrington, and Barrington Hills, because their land abuts that. And so just...
Yeah, okay.
It's created a real, a real issue.
Yeah, that's interesting. I know I did, for a long, for a long time at their meetings, they did want to divulge where it was.
Well, it is divulged. People, the way our neighboring members of Baycock found out was they got phone calls from people who were upset, why did, why were they putting a fire station there? They said, we're not putting a fire station there. What are you talking about?
Actually, we are.
I know it was more land than was by Perry Middle, and obviously that was contested just because of its location by the school.
Yeah, and the, I think there's all sorts of, you know, complaints, and you hear all sorts of things, but this was the topic of conversation that Baycock, because of the, our villages and townships having to handle these questions and going...
We didn't know anything about it.
We don't know anything about it.
They were very secretive about where it was being located, so just indicating it's on Barrington Road, didn't any point out for lately. That's some conversation that she...
Thank you. Road to Infrastructure trustee Perkins RG.
Yes, road goddess.
I'll be out this week here.
You get this, this...
Yes, I'll just go, I'll just go, you know. I'll take a few while, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll start learning.
That's right.
I'll loan you my Blue Village shirt.
Ooh.
Can I use the LaBroom dustpan or something like that? Just me?
In, considering road repair, we have engineers out looking for designs for the road repairs, and they should be in the next couple of weeks, so stay tuned. And that is it.
Thank you. Questions for trustee Perkins? Just for the record, we did discuss some of this in terms of the budget plan in the other room during the committee of the halls. I think we're all pretty well informed, and thank you for, for spending time on it. It's probably the thing people talk about the most day-to-day is the rooms. There is no, there are no action items under reject, item 12, ordinances, 13 resolutions, 14 new business, 15 is a second opportunity for the public to address the board, no one sees recognition, no closed session, no other. Chair would like a motion to adjourn.
So would I.
Moved by, moved by Thompson. Seconded by Schaller. All those in favor? Post. We have. Thank you.